Okay. All right. Welcome, everyone. Happy New Year. This is the first workshop of 2021. 2020 is behind us. Happy Voting Day, Election Day. Make sure you vote before seven o'clock tonight. Welcome back, Council. Welcome back, Wendy and everyone. Thanks for being here. We'll go ahead and go right through this. This is usually for civics class. This is the housekeeping meeting of the year. So we will set the civic calendar. So first item on the agenda is the 2021 calendar. Did everybody have a chance to look over that? We corrected one issue in December. It was just a typo. Anybody have any questions about the civic calendar? No. Okay. Yeah. Check over through the week and let us know if you do before Tuesday.
Do we want to add the, now that the DDA has set their monthly meetings, do we want to add that?
Sure. Absolutely.
Wendy, do we need email you?
Yep.
Okay.
Is it like the third Tuesday?
That we're doing? I believe it's going to be the second Wednesday of every month at 6:00 PM. I just want to triple check myself. So I know this month it is next Wednesday, it's the 13th at 6:00.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that. Yeah. And if anybody sees anything else through the week that we need to add, please let Wendy and I know and we'll get it added in there. Did Chairman White get a copy of this? I think you're fine. I think I'll look through it for the planning and zoning meetings. Other than if you have, unless you have another meeting scheduled a bit. So, okay. Item number two. Mayor Pro Tem and I, in just previous discussions, would like to put forward the name of Gary Snow for Mayor Pro Tem to serve the year 2021. So I thank Councilperson Quinn for her service as Mayor Pro Tem through the years. You've done an outstanding job. Thank you. And we all appreciate it and the city does. And on behalf of the city, thank you very much for everything you've done. And as Gary's possible last year with us, we will, I'll put Gary's name forward for Mayor Pro Tem. So I'm happy to discuss that with anybody through the week or tonight. Assuming Gary wouldn't accept. But yeah. If you have any questions or comments about that through the week, let me know. So next committees, I'll be putting forward Public Safety, Councilperson Mooney and Snow, Public Finance, Councilpersons Quinn and Snow, Public Works, Councilperson Keen and Mooney for public for the following committees, those committees for the year. Okay. Winterville Volunteer Fire Department Officers. I sent you the slate of officers from Chief Gabriel. He's not going to be here tonight, but you have the officers. We're here adding a safety officer this year. It's per their bylaws, which is what she can do and he has done. So we'll have those slate of officers to approve at next week's meeting. And next, I'm going to move an agenda item up a bit because we do have Buck Bacon. And Buck's been with Tom and I for a good part of the afternoon. So we want to, we want to get him home. So I'm going to move him on up before the community center update. So I sent you all the preliminary draw, design for the crosswalk at Main Street in Parkview or Main Street in front of the depot. And if you have any questions, Buck, would you take the podium? Because I do have, I do have one change. And Buck graciously printed out some larger copies of page four, which is the crosswalk itself. And what, what you're looking at is if you see the crosswalk there, the crosswalk was designed to line up in front of, directly in front of the W that we created in front of the depot. So it lines up centered with the W. So as you're walking across the street from Main Street, the post office or wherever, you'll, you'll have a nice visual to walk into, which is the W and the, and it actually lines up with the middle of the depot doors on the backside of the depot or the front side of the depot, depending on whether you want to train on. So the island in the middle is a grassy island that we will probably put flowers in to reduce maintenance there, wildflowers. And we did request one change, Tom and I did, that we want to talk to you about because it was popular as we were standing there. The crosswalk now goes across Main Street to the depot and then a new sidewalk along Main Street connects to a sidewalk that currently exists there that connects to the trail. Well, as we stood there, we thought entering that W makes a lot of sense. And why not encircle the W with a kind of a roundabout of a sidewalk and connect it right to the Firefly Trail, which keeps you in front of the depot and keeps pedestrians away from Main Street in that corner where it's already confusing for drivers. And they're having a bit, it's taken some getting used to. So do you, do you understand what I'm saying? So you'll cross over, the sidewalk will continue to the W, circle around the W and then hit about, there's about a three or four foot gap that it'll connect to the trail. And then we'll pull the existing sidewalk up and have no sidewalk and just green space there.
And the one that is proposed here will not be there either.
Right. We wouldn't. So basically we'd be moving that. Yeah. So it won't add a lot, it won't add much cost, may not add any, may add a little bit, we're not sure. But we would not put that down and we would pull up the existing sidewalk, the old sidewalk that's there that's right on the street. So I think it's a safer and I think for years, and what it does, we talked about, is public works departments and administrations to come will have a centerpiece that they'll have to design something, they'll have to continue to put something in that throughout the years, whether it's a flowers and W or whatever that might be, to create that visual for people crossing the street and driving down Main Street. That's all, and that's what I wanted to just make you all aware of. And I asked Buck from WNA Engineering to be here. Thank you Buck for being here. Thank you for the design. And I'll open it up to questions from council for Buck. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a pleasure to work out in the city of Winterville. We worked on the Firefly Trail. I think it was absolutely a privilege to be out here today to see how many folks, how many families are using that and taking advantage of that. Just very, very rewarding to see the transition in the city of Winterville.
Yeah. It is. It's great. Thank you. And thank you for, for shepherding that project from start to finish. You did a great job. We appreciate it and stayed on, stayed on task. So didn't, didn't lag far behind the completion date that we were targeting. But you know, things happen. So I'll open it up to questions from council for Mr. Bacon.
I have a couple, please.
Yes, ma'am.
First, I do want to thank you as a property owner on Main Street. And the trail was in my yard. What an excellent job you did and what a pleasure y'all were to work with.
Great team.
It is a beautiful thing and now the day goes by that people don't tell me how much they like it. And there's been not one single problem whatsoever. It's great. Okay. Now, my couple of questions about this. If I understand what I'm looking at, we're going to have a single lane between Avery Street and Parkview.
That, that's, that's great. Single lining in either direction.
So the turn lane's gone.
Okay. So I'm a little concerned about the left turns.
Okay.
Because there's so many of them.
Sure.
And I may do, I don't have a solution for this.
Sure.
But I'm a little concerned that traffic's going to back up behind the person turning left. And it could possibly mean that you can't turn left in one direction or the other because of traffic stopped there. Did y'all talk about that?
I see, I see what you're, what you're saying. Yeah. So potentially someone could, could back up, could, could, could want to take a left on Parkview.
And someone heading south could want to turn.
And then traffic would back up along Main Street in the eastbound lane. And then in the westbound lane, someone would want to take a left onto Avery and then traffic could back up and then they could again. So, so here's some things that we can do. I think that's a very, very well put concern. The way that we handle that from a traffic engineering perspective is we put an X box. So it's much similar to what you see in, in front of a fire department or other similar condition. So that, so the cars know that they can't stop in the intersection. And that would be some additional marking. I don't think that is problematic at all. If that's something we want to incorporate into the project.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. We're losing the turning lane. Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I, it may, it may be a non-problem. I don't know. But I, I like that, I like that solution.
And maybe it's something that we don't, that maybe we don't do now. Maybe we see what happens and we can come back and it's a simple matter of putting some additional driving down. It's your pleasure, but I have some options.
Okay. And the other thing is I, I don't think we see the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk over on the post office side of Main Street. Is there, there's, there is one there now. Yeah. And are we just going to leave that like it is?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There would be a new, a new handicap ramp, you know, new accessibility ramp after crosswalk. But other than that, the sidewalk will stay.
Yeah. You can see the ramp on there.
Will the pedestrian crosswalk be, will it have the flashing lights?
It will. The, we call those RRFBs or rapid repeller flashing vehicles. If that's a fancy word. It could be used in the same system that we have across Parkview and throughout the city.
Thank you.
And that, and all of that, Brenda, you'll find on, throughout the different pages of the preliminary design that I forwarded to everybody.
How wide is the island? There's a, there's a cross section at the bottom. So it is five feet.
So a five, a bicycle pole?
A bicycle lane. That's what it is without hanging over.
Yeah. So Buck, you've already told me, but a guesstimate on project cost?
Yes. I'm thinking we're probably somewhere around $50,000. Maybe a little more.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Buck?
I think I have one, but I've already forgotten it.
Is everybody comfortable with the change making sidewalk go into the W and around the W and connect directly to the trail? Yeah.
Some people can't be helped. I think I stepped out in front of you this afternoon. When I was going to load, I think I stepped out in front of you on Parkview. No, I didn't. I thought there's the Firefly Trail crossing about 10 more feet up there, but I'm glad you didn't hit me.
But it does do several things. It takes people away from that corner. It takes people out of the eyesight of, of cars turning because there is going to be a little more, there are going to be people backed up, but that's going to slow traffic down too, right? And that's what we want to do. So, but it clears out that green space and just makes it all a visual line into, because that does get a little bit, I'm noticing, I'm watching and by using it, watching people cross and very few people use the button on Parkview. They wait for cars to go because a lot of cars are coming. So clearing off that corner and pulling that sidewalk into, in and around that W is going to, is going to take away one, one concern that I would have.
And I, I did think of my other question. The lighting, the, not the crosswalk lighting, the R or whatever, but just like the street lighting. Is it, is that intersection going to be fairly well lit at night?
Oh, I'd have to look into that.
Okay.
I don't know where the overhead lights are positioned.
And I can't remember either, but I'll tell you the reason I'm asking is if it's really dark, I'm afraid that people are going to run into that concrete island because they can't, they don't, they can't see. Especially if we just put grass there instead of trees.
Sure.
I can't believe Tom and I planted trees in there.
I can, I can look at the lighting.
Yeah. Let's do.
Just be, have it on display.
Yes.
Let's do.
You could always. You could always put the yellow reflective paint on the, on the end of the island too.
Yeah. Let's look into that, Buck. Is everybody comfortable with the overall design? Everybody good?
I'm good, but I'm much better with my accuracy in person. If anybody has time this week to like meet me down there and do a little quick walkabout, that could be really helpful too.
Yeah. And it's, it's easy. Once you see it, it makes a lot of sense. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that. And Tom and I are riding our bikes back after the meeting. We can show you on the way home.
It's going to be dark then.
So, okay. So that, any other questions for Buck? Okay. Which leads me to another project that we could consider, which wouldn't be as costly. But, and, and it's similar to what we're doing here with the island is Henry Meyer. That crosswalk that already exists, taking that turning lane out there. I would, I would like to ask Buck to give me a quote for what the, the engineering would be, to draw that up, to see if the city would like to move forward with doing what we did with WNA here and getting, because they're going to follow this all the way through. They're managing this project for us like they did the trail for the county. WNA Engineering will put the bids packaged out, solicit the bids, bring them to us. We choose, hire the contractor, they'll follow through and oversee the project all the way through. I'd like to ask Buck to come up with a number for what it would cost to put a, an island at Henry Meyer, where that turn lane is. If that makes sense.
Yeah. I think, I think that makes sense. So we can evaluate it, look at it, provide you guys with recommendations.
Yeah. Okay.
And then similarly, we can handle the engineering and permitting and construction.
Okay. Can you come up with a number of what the engineering and all that would be?
Absolutely.
I wonder, since it's so narrow there, if it might be better to remove the turn lane, but not put in an island?
Can you answer that?
Um, I, I think that's a very fair concern. I think we do not want, I think we want to keep the lane widths no narrower than 11 feet. So the travel lanes to either direction, at least have 11 feet.
I agree. It's just, I know anytime I've been about to turn left onto Henry Meyer from Main Street, a lot of times the oncoming traffic is not staying in their lane. So even though there's a turn lane there, it's dangerous.
Right. So, so some of the advantage of having the curb, and I don't, you know, I think this is part of our evaluation, but some of the advantages of having the curb island, we call it, in technical terms, we call it a pedestrian refuge island. So, so some of the, some of the benefits of that is it offers drivers a cue to slow down. And so it allows pedestrians, it, it, the active courage, right? The comfort in crossing that. It's also an opportunity for them, maybe for younger, younger children or older adults that they can stop midway through the, through the crosswalk and, you know. So there's, there's a, so I, I don't know. I mean, there's some, I hear exactly what you're saying. I think we do need to make sure that we have adequate line width.
Yeah.
And, 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 yeah. I think that's something we need to consider.
And you know, Buck, that's where I live right there.
Yep.
So I'm painfully aware that when you are on Henry Meyer and you want to make a ride onto Main Street, you have, 90, high percentage of the cars swing out. They have to or they'll drive into a storm.
Yeah.
So, and there's just, it's just, there's not much.
And each other way, the radius is, the radius is in the city of Winterville are rarely stored.
Yeah.
So when you come out, you almost have to get into another lane, especially where you pick up. So when you're turning right on from Henry Meyer, you're going out, you can go out and enter the traffic.
Yeah.
That's true.
And it concerns me, it concerns me with that crossing there because of all the young children bicycling and crossing right there. And it's so tight when, when there's a turning car and a passing car and an oncoming car. That's a recipe for somebody not being seen, a little one not being seen by a car that's not stopping and the other two are. So that, something has to be changed there.
Yeah. I don't, it's a tough.
So, yeah. Because it's, because it's, because that's, that section of sidewalk is also part of the safe routes to school.
Yep.
For the elementary school.
Yep.
And so I think there are a couple of things that we maybe should consider as part of that design is, is considering widening the curve return, that's the, that's the radius. They're making that a much longer curve. And then also we can, we can evaluate the way a vehicle tracks around the turn. So we, we have the capabilities of, of modeling what a truck will do or a car, a typical car truck entering and exiting Henry Meyer would, would, would track through that intersection. And then we can use that to determine whether or not an island is appropriate or some other measure. And, and we're, place that out.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. If you don't mind, get that, that.
Absolutely.
Number for me so I can, maybe before next week, so I can bring it for council next week and get a look at it while we're looking at this, while everything's still, people are still getting used to all the new stuff, you know? So, okay. Thank you, Buck. I think that's all, unless anybody has anything else for Buck. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Next, community center update. The Department of Public Health will be moving out Friday. And they will be going to, they'll be going to WNA Engineering, WA Engineering, where they'll have four lanes of testing opened up for COVID testing. Which brings me to something from a call this morning from GMA is, you know, I know y'all are all aware of all the cases spiking up, but Georgia's currently number 10 and moving up in the charts quickly. And talking to, or hearing from the two doctors on the call today, they were talking in terms of, you know, a collapse in the system in a few weeks if we keep on this trajectory. So I'm going to start putting out messaging. And they also said that according to their data, Department of Public Health and the state, these, these two officials, the doctors, that according to the data, that local municipality elected officials, county officials are more trusted than state and federal officials. So they're urging every, every elected official in this, I'm urging every elected official in this room, they're urging every local elected official to get out there and tell people, this is the most crucial time of the pandemic. The next two months are going to be the most crucial time of the pandemic, which is, and it has me considering our meetings too. So I'm thinking about, you know, after we get through the housekeeping, pulling everybody back and keeping everybody home as we get through the winter. So if you would, I'm going to be getting a document, or I got a document from the Georgia Municipal Association earlier. I'll forward it to everybody, forward it to your email friends, everybody, social media, everybody you can. It's kind of an action plan of what to do for the next several weeks. This does not discriminate. So everything we're hearing that children aren't carrying it, the data does not support that in the state of Georgia right now. It's children, adolescents, all the way up. So everybody be safe and be careful.
What did you say about that?
Children are, are carrying, are carrying and getting the virus?
Yeah. I, I agree. That was what they said.
We've been, we've been hearing a lot that, you know, the children are carrying it and the schools are okay. But the data doesn't support that in the state of Georgia right now, according to the two doctors that were on the call.
Yeah. I, I agree. I just thought you had said the opposite. I wanted to clarify.
So.
There's that other new virus that's hit Georgia. There's an 18-year-old today.
Okay. And, and that's.
He's dead. He's a Florida, Georgia, uh, Californian.
Yep. Colorado. And that's, and that's what I think's happening. I mean, I don't know, so I don't, I'm not going to say that. But I think that's what's kind of firing everything up. But they were very concerned. That was, that was one of the more concerning calls I've been on since March of last year with the Georgia Municipal Association and the professionals there. So I'll be putting the word out and I ask you all to do the same and everybody, just take care of everybody in the city.
They also said, don't wait on the state.
And it's, and it's, and it's, you know, the masks, social distancing, washing your hands, staying home unless you absolutely have to go anywhere. Just, you know, just be careful. The next two months are pretty crucial. So let's see. And, okay. More news. Joanne will be moving on at the end of July from us. She has submitted her letter to me and to begin a new chapter with her husband. So we will begin preparing for that. As soon as the Department of Health moves out, we'll go through and Joanne and I are going to make a checklist and get things fixed and back in shape and get everything cleaned back up so that we can putting, start to put plans together to open back up when, when possible. I'll keep everyone updated on that. And if I have any more news, Joanne, maybe Joanne can be here next week, but I'll keep you updated as I can with the community center. Public Works, I have added some workload to Mateo, who took over and kind of filled in as a part timer toward the end of the year as city arborist, but has been a big help to Tom. And with the budget approval of the funding that we approved for an assistant for Tom, I've added that workload to Mateo, who has, who will start in that role as soon as, basically as soon as I've updated council. So he'll just have more responsibilities in being an assistant to Tom in addition to dealing with the trail, city arborist, all things landscaping. Please stop me if you have questions as again, this, 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 the housekeeping meeting, I'm kind of, I'm kind of blasting through it. Winterville Tree Commission, we will vote to approve reinstating Bob Bonsel for a three-year term next week. And we had Leah Clark on here for a presentation, but we don't. It's not coming right through the building, is it? But I will reach out to Leah to see if she needed to come to next week's meeting. I'm not sure what the presentation was about, but I'll reach out. We discussed Main Street Crosswalk Project. I think that's going to be, I think citizens are going to be very happy that we're getting this done. Had concerns and heard concerns for years about that. I know Wendy will appreciate the crosswalk over to the post office, flashing lights. Citizen petition for Main Street, just an update there. They, I, again, I think I'd already updated everybody last month, but they talked about doing the study. They didn't think much would change. They would look at Church and Smokey, but they wanted to have a discussion in a meeting with me, which we have not set up yet due to the holidays. So I'll set a meeting up with Director Decker and Tim Griffith. Okay. Planning and zoning, Chairman White is here. We discussed last year talking about affordable housing and smaller square foot requirements. And we would like to meet, and I'm proposing, we talked earlier and thought maybe the Monday next, their next meeting, which is next month, they had their first meeting last night. Their next meeting will be the first Monday in February. If we're, if everybody, and we don't have to, you don't have to figure it out tonight. You can look at your calendars and get back to me. But I'd like to start having the meetings between planning and zoning and city council at their next meeting at 5:30 directly following their meeting, which is depending on what they have, could be 5:45 or 6 o'clock. Yeah. So I'll send out an email tomorrow reminding everybody. That makes it easier, easy on planning and zoning. And if it's, and easy on Wendy since she's already there. So if everybody's available or most everybody is available, I think we should go ahead and start having those discussions and just begin talking about it.
Would that be online?
Could it be online? It can. And that's, that's a good point. So, and again, I'll be watching. So as things. Could it be online? It can, and that's a good point. So and again, I'll be watching, so as things. If we start creeping up number five, four in the country, we're just going to shut everything down and go back to Zoom and I can handle the meetings from. Or we may have to postpone that one, we'll just have to see, but let's go ahead and put it on the schedule just to start the conversations. Okay, um, couple of other things that I'm, there's the regional commission update. We, I've gotten a glimpse of some project work done on the story mapping. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. As soon as I look at it, I can forward it and get into it. I haven't even been able to open it yet. So I'll do that and forward that to everybody for their approval and to see what which directions we want to pursue and not pursue. And then speed limits on Main Street. John Devine was going to kind of refresh that project within Regional Commission. I think it's a bit of holiday and and pandemic that's slowing us down on that one, but we've, we, we still have it on both of our dashboards. So I'll continue to update council there. I think the things we're doing with the construction that we'll be doing is going to tone down the speeds for sure. The ordinance that we passed did, we, we've gotten a lot of phone calls, Chief and I have gotten a lot of phone calls. We stopped a lot of trucks. How many trucks have y'all stopped?
We've stopped about 25.
Have you noticed how much quieter it is on Main Street?
I have noticed.
Yes.
It's not only quieter, it's slower.
Yes, it's slower. They've done a great job and they've done, they've done a great job and we had some, some things over the holidays. Due to the ordinance that could cause some concern, but we got through those. And we've had a lot of phone calls, but I've had good conversations with, you know, the, um, some of the heads of the, these organizations that handle the chicken trucks and different things. They understand, they do want to meet with Chief and I, especially some of them that are closer into the city. We're going to hear them out, hear what they have to say. But it's hard to argue with citizens wanting safety and the need for safety on a main thoroughfare of a small city, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, with that.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so it has, it's incredibly quiet around there. I mean, it's. I know citizens have to be happy about that, so, but we will, we will have conversations and we'll keep our, keep, keep our minds open. We don't want to cause anybody any financial hardship, but we do want a safe Main Street. So those are two difficult things to square up. From our, from, from our standpoint, so, um. Let's see. One other thing that I want to talk about before I turn it over to City Council for issues. I want, uh, so Chandler Park, we had the great fortune of calling Josh Kins. And Josh not knowing about Georgia's passing, being very upset about that and telling me that George mentored him in his first years as an engineer. And that he wanted to do this project for us like nobody's business and he wanted to do it pro bono. And I said, well, you look at the project before you tell us you want to do it pro bono because it's a big, it's a big project. And he appreciated that, but he is, I think they are going to do a lot, they're, they're going to make some concessions where they can. But they're very excited to work on the project. Two of their engineers were on site today. I was with them. Steve Rice has done an absolute, uh, just out of the park, knocked it out of the park job, was drawing up the preliminary design for the cities. Getting to turn over to them, which they were thrilled to see and some of the old equipment that he used to put it together. It was, it was funny to see Josh smiling and all the slide rules and all that, but anyway. We have a lot of great people working on the project. That's the update for that. The hope is, the hope is to have a groundbreaking on George's birthday, which is February 24th, March 24th. March 24th. Is yours February 24th? Oh, that's right, okay. So March 24th groundbreaking and with the hopes of having it, you know, completed by a possible marital festival. That's the goal. That's the update and that's the goal. That's an aggressive goal, but you never know. But it was nice to, to, to have Josh be a part of this and he's, he is, he is excited to be a part of this on behalf of George and his family, so.
That's awesome.
Yep. And one more thing I just want you to consider that I thought of last minute is our 2011 splotched and the monies that we have left over in public safety and the community center. We, if there's anything we need to do with that, we should do that. I think we should, or once we decide on full-time officers for Chief Fulcher. I think we need to go ahead and order another car to get them in a good car, get full-time officers in a good car and have three dependable cars. And the others as backups because we do have the money in the 2011 splotched for that purpose and it takes about six to eight months to get a car. So. Yeah, so I think we should probably move on that. I just want to make you mindful of the monies there. And if we want to close out a project, buy a police car, close out the public safety project because there will only be $20,000 left in that splotched bucket, which we can only use for police cars and we couldn't buy a police car with $20,000. But we can move it into a public works bucket that we already have in there or the community center bucket and do something over there. So I bring that to your attention only to be thinking about moving that money around for the benefit of the city. Okay, the other, why, I have one more. We have to vote on this next week and it's came with, this came to us late yesterday was vote on to set the qualifying fee for the council seats that are coming, uh, that will be voted on in this November election. The qualifying fee is 3% of the salary, so it's about $76. We're going to need to vote on that. Next week to go ahead and get that done so they can run ads in the February paper to announce the fee. So, everybody got that? Okay, that's, I think that covers everything that I have. Are there any issues or concerns from council that need to be addressed on next week's agenda?
I don't know if this needs to be on the agenda. I, I have a couple of things that might, but, uh, first I want to ask if the minutes, which I have not had time to read in their entirety, I just skimmed really quick. But I would, I wonder if they would reflect who voted no on the votes that we had during December.
Okay.
I, I would like to request that they do. And, um. After hearing the GMA presentation on COVID today, uh, I know they have a draft ordinance that can be tailored for local governments to use requiring that masks be worn. Uh, I think maybe it's time for us to do that. And I'd also like to ask if our next meeting could be over Zoom? If there's any way that that can be somehow hooked up to Facebook Live? Or if it could be made large enough for the public to attend by Zoom? I, I, I do think we need to really be more cautious in this pandemic right now.
Yeah, I'll run the ordinance through David and then consider your request.
Thank you.
Sure. Anything else from council?
I have a concern about the status of our audit. I've never had a year that we did not get an annual audit and I, I don't know the legal requirements for that and we may have. I just don't, our audit situation is a big unknown.
Mm-hmm.
I could ask whoever needs to do it to figure out where we are, what we need to do.
Yep, you.
Keep us in compliance with the charter and with the, the council. I, I don't really remember voting to do an annual audit, but the years that I've served are running together. We've had in the past voted some.
And I, um, that was on my mind driving over here with the budget audit, um, that we have not seen a budget audit. So I'll get in touch with the office. I'll, I'll get with you and get in touch with them.
Every time I reach out to them. I, I understand, and I understand that they are probably adversely affected by COVID, but I think our charter might require, I don't know what the charter requirements are for an audit, but.
We, we just need an audit.
Well, yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter what the charter requires.
We didn't, you're right.
I, I want an audit, so I.
It should be standard practice for them.
I want to make, I want an audit, right?
Yeah, please, they just can't go on forever.
Sure, and they've had a transition there and then, so not to make excuses, but I, I want to personally, um, reach out to them and find out. Because I was, that was on my mind today on the way over here, that, you know, as you think through what, what's going on tonight. I remembered that we had not gotten that, so.
You know, we're volunteers and even, I mean, I speak now specifically of the finance committee. And we, we rely on that audit and the auditor to help us make sure we're doing the right thing.
Right, with splotched and general.
Correct, that's exactly right.
Yep, I'm with you. I'll get it. I've made a note, so thanks for bringing that up. Anything else? Anybody?
I have a more of a question than an agenda item. I, I could not attend the, the GMA call this morning, but did they speak any about the vaccine? Like sign up website rollout at all? I know I saw some emails that citizens over 65 or citizens with maybe some medical conditions can go ahead and get on some lists. But as far as like us maybe helping all citizens with the information?
There, there was, there's some information that they sent after the meeting. But they mentioned on the call how confusing that's been.
Okay.
And how troubled they are by that. Because people are showing up expecting to be able to get vaccinated and they're not able to get vaccinated, they're having to get on a list. So, um, the, the way it was summed up on the call was the buck stops nowhere. We've all been given the charge to, to find it, so they're trying to figure all that out now. And I think one doctor summed it up when he said the, the making of the vaccine was incredibly efficient. The delivering of it has been a nightmare.
Right.
So I don't, I hate to leave you there, but that's where we are and I'll, whatever information they sent to me after the meeting, I will forward so that we can get that out to everybody.
Yeah.
Because it is good information and they, and they do have a lot more detailed information about even what cities are looking like right now with regard to COVID.
Right.
So there's a lot, there's a lot of good information, I just haven't been able to get into it today.
Okay.
But I will. And I think that we need to keep that as a focus, I mean, literally over the next 24, 48 hours and really getting information out.
Yeah.
Getting information and being informed as to how we can get our citizens vaccinated and safe, so.
Or even if they don't qualify for the first few tiers, even just so they know they're on some list for the next.
Right, right. If we, if we can work together to do that.
Yeah.
I will kind of lean on y'all to push out any information that I've sent to y'all and, and, and reach out for any information that y'all can find as well.
Okay.
I posted on Nextdoor right after that conference and I put a link to the Department of Public Health. But it was, it definitely was being slow, so I'm thinking maybe it has a lot of traffic right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So people may need to be patient, but they can go ahead and online sign up and it asks you a series of questions about your age and your health, uh, so they'll know when to slot you in.
Right. Yep, okay. Anything else? And again, citizens just wear masks, social distance like never before. This is the worst part of it. So getting into the winter and the new strain and whatever's out there that the unknown, so social distance, keep your distance, don't leave in the house unless you have to, especially if you're older. Or have medical conditions that make you more susceptible to the, the virus, so, um, this is the time to be as safe as you possibly can. Anything else from council? Okay, so I have no other comments. I'll open it up to public comments now. Any public comments from anybody?
In regards to anything or?
Anything. Well, almost, almost anything.
No, I, um.
You can take the podium if you want over there. And if you don't mind, tell us your name and your address. And welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I'm Sean McPratt and my address, and this is why I don't know if I'm allowed to be here or not. Physical address is in Arnoldsville.
I said, welcome.
And, uh, Brandon and I told me that we might have the opportunity to speak tonight about the truck ordinance down Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
And I just, I have a roll-off business and operate out of Athens, right near, uh, barbecue joint there. Fresh air.
Mm-hmm.
Fresh air barbecue. And I do a lot of business in Winterville and of course I do a lot of business in Ogletor, Clark County. And, uh, I'm just curious about the ordinance because I did, I drive a, the truck that I drive has, uh, it has, uh, 10 wheels.
Mm-hmm.
And I come through Main Street a lot. And, uh, I did get pulled over and the officer was very nice and just told me this, you know, you can't drive unless you're going to a Winterville city address. And, uh, I was thinking about that today because I had a stop at Harbor Road Crossing. Which is a Winterville address, but not Winterville City. And when I finished there, I had to go to Lem Edwards Road in Winterville, it's a Winterville address. And pick up some more equipment because I keep equipment over there also. And I said, well, I can't go down Main Street because I'm not allowed to, so I'll go, I guess I'll go Beaver Dam, it's Smithsonian. I go down, uh, Harbor Road Lake Road and I turn on Beaver Dam, it says no through trucks. I've already broke the, you know, broke the rules, broke the law, and I know not everywhere it enforces it. But still I had to go, I, I went down there and it said no through trucks, but I was already there and I just kept going. And came down Smithsonian to, uh, I don't know what it's called, there in Morse Road, Boers Road, down to the light right there in Winterville.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Turned right to go, um, but it seems like everywhere I go, if I was to follow the no through trucks law. I'd probably get about half the business done in a day than I normally get done.
Mm-hmm.
And then I started thinking, well, I live in Arnoldsville, on Arnoldsville Road, which is a no through truck zone, but if I'm going to my house for lunch, I mean, they got a lot of that. But then what if I leave my house for lunch and want to go to, uh, Lem Edwards Road? I can't come down and go down to Beaver Dam because I can't go through, I can't go through Main Street. I can't go Yancey, I can't go GW Bray. So I guess if I showed my house in Arnoldsville to Lem Edwards in Winterville, I'd have to go down Arnoldsville, get on 78 way out there, go all the way around to the loop or to, uh, the Winterville Road right there by the theater, anyway, and come up and come up to Spring Valley. I mean, it just, it seems impossible. And I understand the, I mean, I guess is the concern safety or is it the, uh, is it the sight of trucks coming down the road?
Safety's number one. Safety's number one. You're, and then the sheer amount of trucks, it would, it's just, it's just constant all day. And with the addition of a firefly trail, and I understand, it was, it's difficult because I understand financial, you know, that, that weighed heavily on my mind, right? But in the five years that I've been office, in office, the, the steady comment, complaint, concern from citizens is traffic, truck traffic on Main Street that I've heard for five years. And it got to the point where it was, it was so loud with, with the combination of a new infrastructure that is quickly becoming very popular with families and bicycles, that I, I started to really fear the safety. And, and to be honest with you, the, the long-term vision of the city is to totally. That I, I started to really fear the safety and, and to be honest with you, the, the long-term vision of the city is to totally calm traffic on Main Street. I mean, calm it, way down, speed limit, crosswalks. So it's going to become slower and slower and slower to go through that. And that's, that's been the plan for, for a long time. There's even a plan for around about in five points, that's too, we can't afford that now. Probably many, many, many years away for somebody else to entertain, but these are the things that are being brought up to us from citizens. So it's a combination of, of all that, you know, and that, and at the end of the day, that's, that's who we have been elected to protect and serve. And, and their quality of life is what we are charged with maintaining. And, and making sure that it's, it's the best possible quality of life for them. And I'm not saying anything about the trucking industry or trucking business, but just on that Main Street with some of the issues that we've had is very concerning, very concerning.
Have you had a lot of issues?
We do, we have a lot of issues with people not stopping at the.
Trucks or with?
It's all, it's all traffic, it's all traffic. But, you know, and again, we've, we've taken a hard look at it, you know, I ride with Chief. People think the truck's going a lot faster than it is because it's so loud, you know. It's the perception.
Just because it's loud, I mean.
I know, and, and I see it.
I'd much rather see it 25 all the way down Main Street, you know, and no engine brakes and that kind of stuff. And just, I mean, that's a main, that's a real main thoroughfare. And you can't have it, that's just.
No.
That's the way it ended up, but.
And, and, and again, and, and I guess, and this is a conversation that we can continue to have, I'm happy to have it with you guys, you know, offline. Chief and I are going to meet with some fellows next week, I think, that have some concerns and some of the chicken houses that have some concerns. Happy to continue talking about it, but you, you say, you use the words main thoroughfare and citizens use the words cut through. See, and they're just, is there's just.
If it isn't, if you're going, you know, here's Winterville, we're having to go like.
No.
I mean, that's, it's more, less a cut through than you think. And like I said, if I did, if I followed all the rules for no through trucks, I don't know that I could get anywhere I need to go.
And I wasn't aware, I, I was aware of Beaver Dam.
And Beaver Dam may not have no through trucks, I can't say that.
Okay.
Because that was one way I was thinking I could go Beaver Dam and I didn't cut through there to see if they had no trucks, but.
Yeah.
It's just something.
Councilperson Quinn has something to say?
I have about to burst to ask the question though. Why does Ogletor County have the no through truck signs? Why, why do they have no through trucks on Arnoldsville Road, which is an extension of Main Street? And we're asked not to do it on Main Street when we've got a driveway every hundred feet, sometimes outside of the road.
Arnoldsville's a narrow road.
That doesn't seem fair to me.
They have it, but I, like I said, I've, I've never seen it enforced until here, which is fine. I mean, if you have no ordinance, you need to enforce it.
And, and, and we used to have, there used to be a no through trucks on Main Street, but it was relaxed years and years ago for.
And even Cherokee Road has no trucks, but I mean, I've done that for years. I don't know, it's just.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What's your name and where you? What's your name, what's your name? Eric Duck?
I've got a dream business and I, I live on Lemon Edwards, I go to Harbor Road Crossing. Just even back behind us and what y'all are asking, I mean, if it's an issue, drop the speed limit, you don't drop trucks going through. Because if, if you can sit here and tell me there are more truck accidents out there than there are car accidents, I can understand. And I'd stand a walkway, believe it, we get up, we walk in at the morning, man in a boat. And not every day, but we walk it. And, you know, the trucks come up through there, you have people think they're just climbing, oh, they're laughing. But I mean, if it's an issue, you can drop the speed limit, you don't just stop. I mean, you're, you're wanting us to go make a big loop around and put us in more. If the more I'm on the road, the more dangerous it is forever in a big truck, nobody can argue that. So you want me to go five miles instead of one mile? And so you're telling me to be, I guess, a chance of having more wrecks if I'm going five miles or one mile? I mean, like I said, if y'all could sit here and tell me that trucks, I mean, how many wrecked have you had by big trucks?
We've had several, serious, serious, almost have a thousand.
Almost what?
Have a thousand, about four. And this street, on Main Street, there's not built a truck.
Okay.
Do you understand we get all the way out, build a truck lane? I don't see any streets or not, and trucks are there, they're straight.
And I, I don't think that you mean that the trucks were involved.
No, just trucks are involved.
Yeah, but what trucks involved, how many, how many are trucks involved is what I'm asking.
We've had one or two.
All right, how many car accidents have you had? One plus, oh, I don't know. So you're, I mean, what you're asking, drop the speed limit, don't stop trucks?
Can I, can I talk? We've tried that, we've been working on that too. That'll be, that'll be happening soon. So that's, that's, that's all happening.
Why haven't we tried that and still?
Because that's a harder, that's a harder, that's a much heavier lift because there's some state issues we have to go through to do that per the ordinance for our radar permit. So there are, that, that's happening too, that's in process too. So we're doing, we're looking at all, every way we can to slow down traffic on Main Street and make that safer for pedestrians. We're looking at every possible way to do that and we're not trying to hurt your pocketbook, but we are trying to protect our citizens.
You're not trying to, but you're all there to defend us.
But, but, but we are elected to protect our, we are, we are elected to protect our citizens, I'll tell you that.
I understand, you drop the speed limit, like I said, you.
We're working on that too.
More wrecking cars than there is in a big truck.
Jeff?
How many trucks do you talk?
I've got a dump truck that I pull my trucker. And like I said, I'm right here on Lemon Edwards and I've been at Harbor Road Crossing, Diggled all the time and I live back here. And I ain't saying all the time, maybe once or twice a week. And I mean, I understand if y'all are trying to cut out whatever, but if it's from me getting 28 with me and you want me to go west, 78 coming around.
Do you turn off Athens Road on Main Street?
Uh, I come from Charlie Bolton and I turn, yes, I turn right here.
Hey, can you keep that trailer?
Yes, I can.
In that one foot lane? Because I've seen too many big trucks sit there, other trucks, other cars are lined up, the traffic backs up. The cars actually have to back up to let trucks make that turn.
I don't have any problem unless of course that that white line.
Well.
I mean, you know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't want to get in a back and forth. We've, we've heard your comments and like I said, Chief and I are, we're going to continue to have conversations with people, especially business people around the city. As we go through this, as this ordinance is, is rolled out. But I, I, I hope you can understand where, where, where we sit and it's.
Well, I know, I mean, I.
And then you may not, and you, and you may not.
I'm being honest, I mean, I think if you drop the speed limit, if y'all let these trucks are going to cause damage to hurt somebody.
We're dropping the speed limit too, we're going to do that, we're doing, we're dropping the speed limit too.
Well, why wouldn't you start at that instead of maybe trucks? If, if that was a concern, is it about the same?
If I re, if I rewound five years and went through every meeting, I could, I could bring you up to speed, but we've been working on, we, we just discussed the speed limits project. We've been planting trees along Main Street to, to reduce the speeds and we're doing, we're doing several things. We've created a historic preservation commission to identify historic districts so we can put signage up. So that if you do go over the speed limit by one mile, we can stop you. We're doing all kinds of things to slow traffic on Main Street. It's not just aimed at trucks at all. We are, all we're doing is trying to protect our citizens, that's all we're doing, right? And we, and we're trying to protect our citizens and we've heard a lot of comments from the citizens that live and pay taxes in the city of Winterville. We hear a lot of comments from them. What's that?
I make that in this park area also.
Anyway, we're willing to have, you know, Chief, Chief and I'll have, sit and have conversations with anybody who wants to come talk to us about it. And if, and you know, we'll be doing that over the next couple of weeks anyway with some other guys that have had some concerns that are going to come and speak with us. So just set up time to come talk to us and we'll talk to you about it. We've heard your comments, go ahead. Yeah.
Like a month ago, if there were volunteers from class to come out, like, hey, please stop, eighty dollars. Uh, two of our, our officer go through Winterville, was in there checking. Two of those trucks we moved to record to them, they're in square road, two twenty rounds, we don't want to move. We found a truck. One of those trucks are already taken out, they're, by you should see, uh, two weeks prior. It was told not twenty bucks on the road, it was ordered to repair, we didn't remember to pay.
Okay, and your point is that everybody calls up, uh, people.
That's the safety.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's multiple issues with it, it's not just trucks, but let's just, just Main Street altogether. So thank you for your comments. Anything, any other public comments? Okay, again, welcome 2021, happy new year, everybody, citizens, stay safe. As you're watching this, reach out to us with any concerns, council members, myself. Thank you all for attending, Tom, do you have anything to say? Okay, thank you all for attending and we will see you at next week's meeting, 6:30 here in the auditorium. Unless we go to Zoom, which I'll send out information, social media, the city website. Is there anything to update, anybody on what's going on to the website? Okay, okay, all, all the, all the recent ordinances are up on the city's website that were passed in December and November. The beer and wine ordinance, the no through trucks ordinance, vacation rental by owner, update to the code, revision to the code. And the business occupation tax ordinance is all up on the city's website. If everybody wants to take a look at that and if you have any questions, let us know. We'll see you next week, 6:30 here in the auditorium. Thank you.